The regular meeting of the Pasca Gula City Council. Today's February 4th, 2025, and the time is now 6:00 PM. Thank you to those who are in attendance in council chambers with us here in City Hall, as well as those viewing online. We're happy to have you join us. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Randy Carney and my friend from Trent Lott Academy, Daniel Martinez, will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Carney, please stand.
Pray with me, please. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you so much, God, for your many blessings on our lives. Father, we thank you for the privilege of standing here before you today, God, and calling on your name. Father, we thank you for the power of prayer and for the purpose of prayer tonight, God. Father, I ask you, Lord, to especially bless this mayor, this council, all the city employees, everybody that it takes, Father, our first responders. It takes even the citizens, Father, to make this a great city. And Father, we ask that you continue to bless it. I pray for every seat that's filled in this house tonight, God. I ask that you just reach down and touch them, slip your arms around them, and let them know that you know right where they are. You know every heart, you know every need. God, just love on them in a special way. And Father, we pray that everything here that is said and done, God, will bring honor to your name. And we pray this in all things, in the great name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will you now join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Daniel is a friend of my grandson's at Trent Lott Academy, and he is a very smart, very talented, very well-spoken young man. He is currently serving as president of the state Beta Club for middle school students, and we couldn't be more proud to have Daniel with us tonight. He's shadowing me as mayor, and I think he may have some political ambitions. Gentlemen, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
I have one, Mayor, to remove item 10D with a warrant related to kratom. There are a few issues, and I wanted to work on before we move that back to council.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
I have an amendment as well. I'll be removing item 9B. We're still waiting on response from the Secretary of State's office on this item, and so we'll revisit that later.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the Address the Council section. The first item's a presentation by Pasca Gula Youth Soccer.
Tonight, we have Mr. Joseph Powell from Pascola Youth Soccer.
Welcome, Mr. Powell.
Or even whatever it is right now. Daniel, how are you, sir?
I'm good.
Good, good. Counsel, I come before you this evening to discuss the Pascola Soccer Club, the Pascola Rec Soccer. As many of y'all may or may not know, over the past seven years, Pascola Soccer has really not been associated with the city. It's been ran by an organization out of Gulfport, which really didn't have the citizens of Pasca Gula in mind. It was just basically another revenue stream for them. So being the mayor's appointed person on the rec commission and then also running Pascola Youth Baseball, I saw the need, so I wanted to fill the need into ensuring that not only with my two kids, but other kids in general, especially our Hispanic community, was able to have Pascola Soccer back here in Pasca Gula. Over the last seven years, we never really got any good traction on numbers. There'd be maybe 100 to 100 kids who actually did soccer, and most of the soccer in Pascola was traveling to Ocean Springs or to Goshay or even all the way to County Farm Road, which is about an hour and a half from here, give or take how you drive. And that's the northern Gulfport area. And so the biggest concern out of a lot of the citizens here was, you know, we want to play soccer, but we want to play it here in Pasca Gula. And so I made a promise to them in saying, hey, listen, if we offer it here through the city and being the city's guidance and all, and, you know, will you come out and play soccer? Well, not only did they come out and play, we had tremendous amount. We had over 200 kids who signed up to play soccer. All the games are played here in Pasca Gula for divisions of 8U to 10U to 12U. Those are really the ones that, you know, are hard to find to get those kids in there. The tots will come out and play, but those eight-year-olds and up are really the challenge that people always have. And so now, we had at least four to five teams in each of those divisions where we could stay here in Pasca Gula. And I have to say, before I go any further, I could not have done it without the city's rec department, okay? Mike and Antoinette and then Thomas, when he was here, were instrumental in helping that. You had the city's backing of the funding because we weren't sure that, you know, the people would come out and would support it. But not only did they have the funding, but we also got sponsors, so it didn't leave any deficit with the city. We actually made a couple thousand dollars from it. I think it was about $21, $2100 from it and all for the city. So that was my biggest goal, is not to be a nuisance on the city and actually raise money for the city and all, still giving back to the citizens and all, still be able to still do the sports complex for soccer as well. So but what I come to you for this evening is that with that comes All-Stars, just like in baseball, okay? And I'd never had it planned this year to do All-Stars at all, and so it's called Rec Plus. And so what that entails, it entails some traveling. And y'all know that the lot, the majority of these kids who play are from single-family homes and all, and these tournaments are travel costs, right? We have a bunch of travel costs we have to do, and we have to pay referees and those things, right? So just like baseball did before you, is come and ask for a dollar amount for their All-Star participation, I'm asking you tonight for $5,000 to help. Our All-Star teams go to four different tournaments from now until April, and this is all divisions from 8U, 10U, 12U, and 16U girls team, all Pasca Gula residents, all played Pascola Youth Soccer for during the season, right? So no kids are from Moss Point, Goshay, or anything else like that, right? Because I knew that might have been a concern. And all of them did play regular season here. So all these kids are our soccer All-Star kids that have been chosen by our player development director to go on to All-Stars and play. And so I covered the first tournament out of my own pocket for these kids this last weekend, and so I'm asking that, you know, the city contribute some to the fund out of the special tax so we can continue to let Pascola Soccer grow, because if I have anything to do with it, hopefully I can use the same model that I used from baseball to grow it from 240 to over 500, that is now, and I can do the same thing for soccer as well. So with y'all's support, I appreciate that. And once again, I could not have done it without the city's help from Mike, Antoinette, the same way baseball goes as well. A lot of people see this as Joseph did this. There are 14 members on that board with me with Pascola Youth Baseball, and there's also five members on the advisory board with Pascola Youth Soccer, right? So you might see me out front, but there's a whole lot more that goes on behind the scenes when it comes to the success of the overall sports programs that we have here. And I believe the soccer one is the last one that we really got to boost up until we can actually say, hey, listen, we have all our kids going year-round playing a sport, and this will allow them to do that, because basically they'll roll over from this to from soccer to football, to basketball, to baseball, to soccer, you know? And it's a continuing cycle to keep them off the streets and then into sports where they have good role models and mentors and coaches and parents. So but thank y'all for your time and attention, and Daniel, have fun.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. We're so pleased to have the control of the youth soccer organization back in the city. And I know that's an extra task for you and Parks and Recreation. And just to understand, this funding that they're requesting is appropriate? Do we need an action item, or that's just, that's in the budget, right?
It is.
Very good. Any questions from anybody on the council? The next item is the Pasca Gula Recreation Commission. Do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, Mr. Alton Van is here tonight to present on behalf of the rec commission, requesting permission to use special tax funds.
Hey, Mr. Van.
How are you, Mayor?
Great.
Daniel, nice to see you. Okay, so I just have a few things. Sorry for the strange voice, fighting allergies today pretty bad. So the rec commission's really tried to get to work on some things in the city that we've seen and with the recommendations from Mike and Antoinette, and what we've seen, we've kind of started a list. These six items I think you have in front of you tonight are the six that we've kind of picked out to get started with, coming from either public input or things that Mike or Antoinette have seen that need to be addressed. These were all thoroughly talked about in our commission. We actually went back once or twice to get different estimates to have these jobs done. We think that the estimates that we were given are very fair. So like I said, I know you probably have them in front of you, but these were all voted on unanimously, unanimously approved through the commission. The first one is a new shade structure at the Andrew Johnson Center for those children. The second one is a repaving, complete redo of the parking lot at the Pascola Rec Department or the Recreation Center. Many of y'all's been there, you know it's real bad. We, you know, I'm there all the time, the parking lot's full, there are a lot of potholes, and just that beautify that area right there. IG Levy, the tennis courts need resurfing, resurfacing, restriping. We definitely need to get that done. Those are being used consistently. And like Joseph said, with the boys growing, the girls are growing, the tournaments are growing, sportsplex. It's been identified we need to install two more batting cages like we already have out there, right next to the ones, the two that are there, I guess on the north side, near the fire department, installing two new ones in there to help these kids be able to get into those cages and not wait out, and we're just running out of room. Another one is to renovate the inside of the existing bathrooms or restrooms at the beach park. If you've been to the beach park and seen the ones on the north side there, it's time for those to be done. We're also going to install an HVAC unit in there for the summertime, because it's, we live in the south. And then the last thing, and this kind of goes to safety for fans and players, is the installation of bullpens on the four fields on the boys' side, on the baseball side, to give those kids an area to be warming up and not just out in the pathways and walkways. If you've ever been out there, you might have ducked a ball or two. We've got to get, we've got to get that. So we did our diligence on getting some great estimates. Antoinette and Mike have done a great job, but these are six projects that we see need to be, need to be addressed immediately, so we're bringing these to you guys. So that's my spiel. If you'll have questions, feel free to ask. If I can't answer them, I got some backup.
What did you say you were doing at Andrew Johnson?
Andrew Johnson Shade Structure, back by the pool.
Yeah.
Because that other one's just, we're doing everything we can to try to get Andrew Johnson. We've got some other things we want to do there, but a shade structure is something similar to what we've got like at the beach, beach park, the tarp.
There's currently one there, but it's the canopy's ripped, so we had to take it down.
Yeah. Yeah. So something for those kids. We've got summer coming, we have a lot, that pool is, we spent plenty of money, y'all know, Mike knows, we spent plenty of money getting that pool back up and running, and it is well-used, so having some shade for those kids would be.
Any other questions, Mr. Van?
Yeah, on those bullpens, you think they'll be ready by some?
They said as soon as it gets approved.
That should be an easy job.
About two minutes to get the material in.
Yeah. I don't see any reason why they're not ready for it.
They'll knock it out in a day.
Yeah.
Any other questions? And the funding for this project is, again, part of the recreation, Parks and Recs, special tax, and there's funding there in the budget for this. So you don't need to vote.
Charlene has reviewed this as well, and she approved it.
Thanks so much for your involvement, and Parks and Recreation is a real high point to our city. We have, I think, more parks and more recreation activities, and when you look at the boat launches and the piers and so many activities for our kids. Mike, thank you for the job you do. Appreciate it.
And then Antoinette, invaluable. We'll all say that.
Ms. Antoinette as well. Next is public comments. We are pleased to provide an opportunity at each meeting for comments by citizens, limited to three months of speaking time per speaker, and no more than a total of 30 minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is not a question-and-answer time. The mayor, council, and administration officials will take all comments under advisement and may respond or take other potential action at a later time if warranted. We have three citizens wanting to speak tonight. The first one is Tracy Fountain Castanada. You'll come up and introduce yourself, please.
I'm sorry, this is just for comments. Isn't that correct?
Can I give you something?
That's correct.
Something I gotta take home, that's all. I do live in DeIrbville, but I have customers that live over here in this town, and I fell eight years ago when I hit the concrete face-first. It knocked my jaw back into the side. I've seen surgeons, nobody could put my jaws back into place. I lived like this. I felt like somebody punched me in my face every day for a couple of years till I stumbled across kratom by a complete fluke. Kratom, as you can see what I look like now, the surgeons and doctors are amazed at the difference in my face, and it's all thanks to the kratom. This is why I opened a kratom store, is because what it did for me. It doesn't make you high. As you can see, I'm talking to him, a little nervous, so my voice is a little crackle. But I had wrote something else out. I don't know if y'all know, but in May of 2016 in Alabama, when they banned it and they made it a controlled substance, as soon as they banned it, the following month, there was 40% increase in deaths from heroin and fentanyl. These are not my words, these are statistics from the police department captain. Now, I do have a lot of customers which are y'all's constituents and here in Pasca Gula, and I want what's best for them. And if you ban kratom, then they're almost all guaranteed to go back to drugs or worse death. I know none of, none of you wants that for you, any of your constituents. Now, they've lived a good productive life, all with jobs, have a place to call home over the past five years. However, you take that life support away from them, they'll fall back into drugs, and help me help them stay off of drugs. The pages that I gave y'all is the list, I want everybody to, I hope everybody reads what kratom actually helps people with. There's 73 pages of about 15 or more names on each page, and they're from all over this whole coast, including other states as well. So I want everybody to be able to understand what it really helps you with. You know, y'all, I hope that y'all would follow by lead, by like DeIrbville, they had talked about banning kratom also. Now, they went and they followed the science, and they didn't just listen to people's words or their feelings. They followed the real science from the NIH and John Hopkins Hospital. This ban will affect everyone, including but not limited to police, nurses, firefighters, and church members, all of which comes to my store. Most people come in there for pain, anxiety, depression, and sadly to stay off drugs, in which they have done for five years. I had, now I've gone to my store at 3:00 AM to make people a drink, to help to keep them from going on to drugs. And I hope, basically, I hope y'all do the same to help me to help them. I have more, but it's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda.
Thank you. But just remember, listen to what I look like, and if you take it away, people's going to look like this, like me.
Our next speaker tonight is Dionne Williams. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. To this wonderful city council, I bring your greetings. My name is Dionne Williams. I've been staying here at 4906 Kane Circle for the last 25 years. We have a major issue. I've been very patient, I've been kind, I've been understanding, I've been respectful to the city of Pasca Gula. We have a raw sewage overflow that's been flowing in front of my house for the last 25 years. My daughter was five years old when we first noticed it when we moved into that area. Nice area, a lot of the retired Chevron people and military has died and gone, and I'm the only one that's left in that neighborhood besides Joe Jackson. I've been asking for help, been asking for help for 25 years, and to walk out front of my house to smell raw sewage is not, is not acceptable. I went above and beyond, and I spoke to OSHA, people from OSHA, and I just need help, guys. I just need help. I'm not axing, I'm not, this is not a threat, this is just coming to you guys, looking for help, because I feel that if this was anywhere else, south of, and I hate to say this, if it was south of Beach Boulevard, we wouldn't be having this issue. I paid my taxes, I love the city of Pasca Gula, and I just need to be heard, and I would love for you guys to take a look at that. I've talked to my dear friend Felix, and he's been very respectful, coming out, taking a look at it. I spoke to Public Works, the people who've come out there, and they've given me different answers for years, man, it's just, it's just not acceptable. I just need you guys to take a look at it and, you know, just, we need answers, man. I mean, my grandchildren can't even play now, you know? My daughter was five when this started, and it was a great neighborhood, great people. And I have to get out after this stuff is gone. I mean, this last, this last incident started January the 13th, and it just stopped yesterday because I caught a public official guy working out there, and he was able to tell me what was going on. Need help, man? I get out there, I clean, I bleach, I, I do it all. I keep my neighborhood clean, I love my neighborhood, and I just think we need to be heard too, man. You know, that side, I'm kind of getting emotional about it because I really love this city, man, and I love what you guys are doing, but we need some love on that side of town too, you know? So just take a look at it, and, you know, we'll, we'll really appreciate it. I'm the voice, I'm the youngest that's in that circle now. Like I said, all the people are dead and gone, and I'm that voice now, and we just need to be heard, guys, that's all. I thank y'all so much. I thank you for the opportunity to stand before you guys. Daniel, I love that suit, man, you're sharp. And, you know, just, 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 just think about us, man, that's all we ask, and I really appreciate you guys listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Sir, is the problem manholes overflowing? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's the, it's the raw sewage coming from the, the, the...
Catch basin.
The, what's her name, herself? The, you know, you pick up the...
It's a manhole.
The cement hole, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And so, like I said, I talked to several people, and, man, one guy said, okay, the whole city is pouring grease into the, I come on now. But we've had different areas, and I found out that pump is supporting like four different subdivisions. You've got Monaco Lakes Townhouses, you've got King James, you've got Robin Hood. You, it, you just need some help, man, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. We're going to do what we possibly can.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Our third speaker is Erin Grant. Ms. Grant, if you...
Hello.
Hi.
So when I was 16, I had two corrective skull surgeries for a Chiari I malformation. And a couple months after my second surgery, my mom passed away from the same surgery because the condition was hereditary and congenital. When I was 18, I had my gallbladder removed, and then when I was 21, I had to have a life-saving hysterectomy, and I became addicted to opiate pain medication very easily. I spent seven years in prison as a result of drug charges, and I have legitimate pain still to this day from my surgeries. I have a headache every single day of my life. There's nothing that can be done surgically, so I rely on kratom for pain relief, and I've been sober off of drugs for five and a half years. And if you guys ban kratom, you're going to be taken a lot away from millions of people because I rely on kratom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have two public hearings for the Planning and Building Department. Mr. Church.
Just to correct one thing on here, 7A, the address is actually 2106. This is the property we brought to y'all a month or so ago. We gave them 30 days. They have moved forward, it is looking a lot better. Still working on inside of the house, but they did clean up the yard, and they're taking care of what they need to take care of, so I'm going to go ahead and pass that one through the file. The property at 2412 King, we gave them 30 days to move forward. They have moved forward, but they have moved forward without pulling permits. I'm not real pleased with what I'm seeing over there, but I am asking, just give me 30 more days to get them squared away on this. They have put new siding on the house. I'm trying to reach out to them now to get the permits taken care of and find out why they covered all the windows up with siding, but...
Is this Mr. Garrett's property?
Yes, yes. They have spent some money on it, but we were not able to see exactly what they were doing, because we didn't know they were doing it. So I'm in process now, trying to reach out to them to get over there so I can go inside, see what's done, and get the permits taken care of. If they don't do that, then I say we move forward with the demolition.
And they understand that without a permit, you have the, the city has the right to remove all of the improvements that they have made?
Right, right.
From that point going forward?
Yes, sir. So I'm, the first one, I'm fine with. I think they've, they've done a good job, they're moving forward. This one, I would just like to extend it 30 days and give me some time to try to fix the problem.
So do we need a motion and a vote to extend the...
Yeah, I was going to suggest that maybe extend it to March 18th, then in the second meeting in March, just for some scheduling issues.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
It's already been declared a menace to...
I don't think so.
No? Do we need to do that tonight?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think we just give it to the 18th. If they don't go from there, then we'll bring it back, and we'll declare it a menace from there, and we'll move forward.
Very good. Is there a motion to declare, I'm sorry, to, to continue the repair? What's the term?
Continue to repair.
Continue the...
Permit and, permit and repair.
Permitting and repair at 2412 King Avenue. Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Michael, would you do anything on 2106?
He passed it to the files?
Yeah, it'll just, the case is just that, because we'd have to reset the notice to bring it back up, so that, and the case will...
Any other discussion? You have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the consent agenda. Does any member of the council have any questions about the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. saying aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have the city manager's agenda items. Mr. Larson.
Yes, Senator Mayor Willis. Tonight, we have a resolution approving advertisement for engineering services for the Restore Act project on Lowry Island. The city was awarded $4 million in Restore Act funds for site improvements, demolition, shoreline stabilization, and environmental remediation for future development. We have met with developers for future plans for this site, and these improvements will be the first step in the development of Lowry Island.
That's exciting. Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving advertisement for engineering services for the Restore Act project on Lowry Island? Slow move. Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the city attorney's agenda items. Mr. Moore.
We have one item tonight, is an ordinance to terminate polling locations for elections. Our, some of the locations we used in the past no longer want to serve as polling locations. So this would establish the new location for awards three and four for elections.
Do we have a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of Code of Ordinances Regarding Election Precinct? Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Are we putting this out? What's the timeline for the?
Yeah, it'll be published, and we also have, notice will go out as well from the redistricting that was done previously. So all this information will get pushed out to the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion passes. Next is the docket of claims. Are there any questions regarding the docket of claims? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
Someone.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have mayor council items. Are there any mayor council items that anyone wants to bring up this evening?
I have to ask, I'll bring up, the tree cutting services, they're hacking, what they're doing here looks absolutely atrocious to me. Is there anything that we can do to, or, I mean, it looks horrible. I mean, it's like they have no.
I mean, you know, that's not a, yeah, I mean, we can have a conversation with the power company, but that's who's doing that work. That's not city.
I know it's not city, but that's why I'm asking, is there something?
Can we request that the power company send a representative for us to discuss at a future meeting?
Absolutely.
What they're doing to our trees in Pasca Gula.
Yeah.
They're butchering them.
Oh, they are.
It's tampering.
Yeah. Thank you, counsel, Milwaukee. Anybody else want to bring up anything tonight? Next is executive session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session to determine if there's a need for executive session? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the public portion of our agenda. And thank you to my mentee, Daniel Martinez, for attending tonight.